Hello, everyone. It is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, calling the regular city council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Councilman Curly, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Our gracious heavenly Father, first of all, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, not only the elected officials and the employees, but all of our citizens of this beautiful city. We ask that you would be with each one of us, and while we may disagree, we disagree with dignity. And, Lord, we ask that you would be with all the folks in our country, particularly those who need help, whether it's money or health-wise, I would ask that you would be with them and comfort them and heal them. We ask all these things in your Son's holy name, Jesus of Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll start off with actually a presentation. So I would ask that council join us down by the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us a couple of minutes to introduce our new K-9 team, as not everybody probably here knows, but last week, we gave our Sergeant McNeil and his K-9 rider, we gave them a farewell ceremony, not a proclamation, but a nice plaque for all the service they provided. And now we're here tonight to introduce our new K-9 team, which is Officer Severini and K-9 Digo. K-9 Digo is a Dutch shepherd. He was actually born in Poland, and he's approximately one year old right now, so he's got some more room to grow into those big feet. And they went through K-9 training, which was five weeks long, and they were able to get fully patrol certified, specializing in narcotics detection. They're certified through NAPIC, which is the North American Police K-9 Handlers Association, and they're going to be a very welcome addition to our police department. So introduce Officer Severini and K-9 Digo.
All right.
All right. Moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda for August 20th.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agenda for August 20th.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes. We'll move on to the first hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now open. Everyone gets three, I see there's a lot of faces here. Everyone gets three minutes to speak. Please just state your name before you start.
Karen Murray, East Point resident. Lots to talk about, and I'm glad that this is up on the screen. That's one of the things I wanted to address. The EEOC sued Sheets over discriminatory hiring practices. So this is not just a disgruntled employee or employees. This is the EEOC that sued them. So the Planning Commission, I don't know if it's they didn't do the research, or they did and they ignored it. I'm hoping you're going to get in touch with the other communities that rejected Sheets in their communities. This is not good for East Point. You know, right around the block, you have people living in apartments, and they run this thing 24 hours a day. I'm not convinced that, you know, there's not going to be any problems with noise, crime, light pollution, so on and so forth. We're going to lose Office Depot. You don't really have that many stores like that to begin with in East Point. We've got more than enough restaurants. We've got more than enough gas stations, and so this is not a good idea. I also know that it looks like you want to move forward in allowing the marijuana dispensaries. Again, bad idea. The Safer Banking Act still has not passed, and the most current article I found was July 24th or 26th, so last month. And this is written from those who are proponents of having the marijuana shops throughout the communities. So instead of just focusing on, oh, look at all the money it's going to generate, you know, oh, this is great. It's like, no, no, it's not, because in turn, what has happened is the crime rates have gone up because they can't do their banking with the banks, because pot is still illegal under federal law, and all the banks and credit unions have FDIC insurance. It's pretty impossible for them to do their banking. And so, you know, if the stores aren't getting robbed, the delivery drivers are, and people are not following the law. They're outside smoking pot on their porch, in their backyard, in parking lots, in their cars, whether parked on the street or in their driveways, and we also have the nuisance ordinance that prohibits any smoke interference with adjoining property owners.
Thank you very much.
Bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council. Dave McCoy, 17021 Stevens. First of all, I'd like to thank you for serving the city for 20 years. We've been doing the cleaning contract. A few things came up at last week's meeting that we'd like to clarify on. With me to my left is Jessica Judkin. She's the operations manager. That's the daily stuff that the city deals with. She handles that. And Jackie Marsack, my daughter, is the president of McCoy Maintenance. So Jessica wants to address a few items, if that's okay.
Okay. So as Dave mentioned, we did want to thank the city from, now I don't have my notes, but we served the city for about 16 years previously, and now for the last three to five years, we had stepped in when the previous provider kind of stopped showing up to some of the buildings, and we stepped in to fill that void, and then eventually won the contract back again in 2021. At the last meeting, City Manager Walton mentioned that we did have a security issue with a tether situation. Just kind of wanted to clear the air on that a little bit and explain just a little bit more of that. We did run a background check on that employee prior to placing her in the police department. I have a copy of it here. It is, it is clear. There was zero, nothing on it, and she did not make us aware of any issues. After being in the police department the first three days with one of our other employees for training, and then two days on her own, someone there did realize that she was on a tether. They ran their own background check, at which time she was ejected immediately. And she did indicate to, I think it was Officer Hulk Hambright, that she had informed us of that. That is inaccurate. Our human resource person absolutely did not know of a tether. She would never have placed an employee with a tether, really, in any of our buildings, but particularly the police department, who we know runs their own background checks. As a result of that issue, we have put new protocols in place with the assistance of Deputy Chief Hambright. Where now no employee sets foot in the police department until the police has approved them. They run their own background check separately, which they were doing before, but they weren't necessarily doing it before we were placing. Now they are doing them ahead of time. So as far as a security issue or a safety issue, we've resolved that, and it will never happen again. Of course, we are sorry that it happened, and obviously uncomfortable about it, but it is not something that is a risk of ever happening again. Walton, sorry, Assistant Manager, or City Manager Walton also mentioned some turnover. Unfortunately, in today's world, there is employee turnover, particularly in the janitorial business, in any of the lower-end businesses. You just, you have to find the right person who's willing to put the work in, and sometimes it takes a few before you find that person. We work very diligently to make sure that happens. We put the time in the training. We put the money into the training. Turnover is bad for us, too, because it costs more to get a new employee, to hire them, to background check them, to train them. So that is ultimately our goal, is to find the right person for the right building. And in some of our, in two of the accounts that we clean?
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay. We've had it since, we've had the same employees the whole time. Now, the city hall and the police, we have had some turnover, but we worked diligently to make that happen. We are East Point-based. We try and support East Point businesses as much as possible. We would be honored to hold on to the contract, and we will bend over backwards to be responsive and to resolve any issue at any time when we can. So we just want you to know that the contract is very important to us. We hope to hold on to it, and I hope that you will take into consideration that we're East Point and that we seriously value this city as our customer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mayor. I'm going to talk about what you have up there. Sheets, sheets, I'm saying it right. I travel, if you go south of Michigan, you're going to run into them. They're everywhere. I've been down in North Carolina. I even went down in the hills of West Virginia, and they were there. They're all the way over to Texas, Louisiana. They're probably further west than that. In all of the places I've been in, it's clean. The help is clean. The people are good. The bathrooms and everything are absolutely clean, and the grounds are clean. I am for seeing them come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Doug Steen, 22493, Wilmont Avenue. I'm coming here frustrated with the building department relative to the topic of tall grass complaints. I've dealt with that over the years and never have gotten satisfaction. This year alone, and I'm going to just read the letter I addressed to, I understand, John Myers. It says, dated July 29th, "I'm elevating my complaint specifically to broken methodologies I continually experience with the ineffective building department's history of responding and taking corrective actions to tall grass on submitted residential addresses. I have made three separate complaints this summer to my neighbor's tall grass scenario and have yet to receive one response to my complaints. I've made two prior visits to the building department in an attempt to seek corrective actions without satisfaction. I've left two prior messages to you with no return calls. The lack of duty by East Point is intolerable to those I discuss regarding enforcement and lack of your staff's common internal understanding to city processing of citizen complaints. I urge you to look into my 2024 complaints and further discuss with your staff, Roseanne and Tierra, to identify turnaround time from complaint up to closure. There are specific topics I've heard from staff and from a contractor who has stepped away from accepting city work orders due to the lack of business he was receiving. One, what is the timeline for city actions receiving complaint to assignment to contractor? Two, is what I've been informed by staff that certain contractors have the authority to seek out by their own discovery to take immediate action to violators, consistent with prior year's understanding that no longer does the city and the title owner of the property receive an initial warning. Is that truly in play? If so, please extend an additional con, if so, please hire additional contractors. Has more recently the city instituted the practice through code enforcement to place a sticky note forwarding to the resident that action will be taken, and in how many days if still noncompliant? Four, how many more sticky note warnings will a violator be extended for subsequent violations?
You have 30 seconds.
Or hopefully, is the practice limited to one grace period? Five, what are the costs assigned by a contractor cutting six? What became of the old website where citizens could track their own complaints through progress? Seven, why do I never hear back from you or your staff after placement of either a call or complaint? I'll just close by saying, I stopped in again today. It's probably my fifth time. Last week, John was in office, but he was late to arrive and had emails. I left a sticky note through his staff, no response, and again today. So I believe this subject is on today's agenda one way or another, is it? And, oh, by the way, C.C. Harold, or Harry.
Thank you, sir. Can I ask, Ian, can I ask him to leave? It sounds like we have your contact information, but can you leave your name and phone number with Ian back there? So we can follow up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Reed. I live on Almond by Roxanna Park. This Sunday, I was walking around my neighborhood, because I'm the precinct delegate there, and after getting 20 houses, I stopped to admire a gentleman who had beautiful landscaping and a beautiful porch. My son does concrete work, decorative concrete. And upon further talking to the man, I said, I just want to compliment you on how beautiful your yard looks. He invited me into his home, and I found out that this building committee, or building department has been hassling him to put railings on his porch, and it's, the design of the porch is going to be difficult. But when I talked to him a little bit more, and I do have his permission to speak on his behalf, I found out his wife is in the hospital, and she had both of her legs taken off. He's 82, and she's 84. The building department is harassing him to get these railings up. He's freaking out because he doesn't even know how he's going to get a ramp built, and I'm begging you to please stop harassing this man before he has a heart attack or his wife dies. I don't like the, where the sheets, that's kind of a, I would put a different vowel in there, but I don't like what's happening there because residents don't like it, and I don't like three dispensaries in East Point, even though I am cannabis-friendly, and I'm part of the people that got it legal for patients, caregivers, and the patients that need it. Thank you. I got a new motto for the city. Bend over. Here it comes again.
Hi, my name is Jerry Cook. I'm at 23028 Beaconsfield. Sheets will be getting built at the end of my block if you all pass this, but that's going to be very horrible. It's so hard to get out from Beaconsfield to Nine Mile, just to get on the freeway or to go left or right. So with that business being there, it's just going to cause more confusion. And it being 24 hours, it's going to be a lot of people that we don't want in the neighborhood, and it's just going to bring too much traffic. We don't need any more traffic over there. Everybody that comes up here, like the last couple guys ago, the gentleman, when he spoke about how he wanted sheets, me, they were talking, he's talking about all the sheets being built by truck stops. All of these places are truck stops. My block is not a truck stop, so I don't plan on seeing the sheets in my neighborhood. You know, send it to wherever the truck stop is at. Send, you like sheets at truck stops? You stop at truck stops along the road? 94 in Beaconsfield is along the road. That's my neighborhood, and I definitely don't want to see that place built there.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Robinson. I'm on Beaconsfield at 22872 Beaconsfield. I just want to pin it back on the young man that just spoke. I don't think it's a good idea to have another gas station in East Point. We have one on Hopper and Nine Mile. We have one on the corner of Nine Mile and Beaconsfield. We have one on the corner of Kelly and Nine Mile. Go down a little further, we have one on Grasshirt and between Nine Mile. Can you come up with anything else besides gas stations? We need other things in East Point besides gas stations. We are the peoples. We deserve more. You all are, the counselor, you, I thank you all for what you all are doing, but please look out for the neighborhoods, our neighborhoods where we live at. There is going to be traffic 24/7. You have a place that's open, going to be open 24/7. I'm right in the center of Beaconsfield. It's hard. When I try to get out there, you know, left turn at a certain hour, no right turn at a certain hour. It's hard, and this is going to make it even harder for us to get on Nine Mile. That's my prospect on this place right here. Sheets for the marijuana, I'm against it. You go up and down Eight Mile, there's nothing but marijuana dispensaries there. You have three in East Point. I know you may bring money into the city, but do we really need it? Look out for the peoples that, in the city, and not just about the dollars. Come up with something else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. 20725 East 10 Mile. Approximately a year ago, April 2023, the city council and planning commission denied a similar gas station on East 10 Mile. So I'm kind of curious on why the council and the planning commission is ready to approve a very similar project now. What's changed? What is the difference? It was a gas station, 24-hour facility, with food as well, but that was denied at the planning commission and at city council. And for the last two residents that live behind the Sheets, if they're, they don't like the Sheets, they had the opportunity to move out. Who is going to want to buy their homes? Their house is going to be worth pennies on the dollar.
Hold on. Sorry. I know that people have some strong feelings, but if you could try to just hold your comments while someone else is speaking, please. And I did pause the time. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Who will buy their homes, considering the traffic, the noise, and the public safety? There will be two 24-hour gas stations within 100 yards of these residents. I would like to confirm with the city council, this project meets all the special land use of the city ordinances, or the zoning ordinances. Additionally, how will this work with the road diet from I-94 to Kelly Road and the roundabout at Nine Mile and Kelly Road? You are creating a significant bottleneck. This will be the fifth fueling station within a half a mile. If approved, you're hurting small business. You're hurting all the residents. No one is getting, Sheets will not bring anything to East Point that is not already there. Please take this into account. East Point is referred on the signage as a family town. It should be referred to as a gas station town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mrs. Cotton. I also live on Beaconsfield. One of my problems I had with Sheets at the commission was they did not go to those three houses and show them exactly where that wall's going to be, where their building's going to be. They showed the area as being very dark, which is horrible. I'm sure they can get lighting that will go down and not in people's yards for safety. Also, the traffic. Years ago, there was a light at Raven. That right light was taken down. I was told it was from the state. I asked the city council at that time to put the light back up. They said it's $50,000. We cannot get across. I pray every time I leave for work that I don't get hit, because I'm waiting three lights to get across. I have to sneak in there. You are creating a significant bottleneck. This will be the fifth fueling station within a half a mile. If approved, you're hurting small business, you're hurting all the residents. No one is gaining, Sheets will not bring anything to East Point that is not already there. Please take this into account. East Point is referred on the signage as a family town. It should be referred to as a gas station town. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mrs. Kot. I also live on Beaconsfield. One of my problems I had with Sheets at the commission was they did not go to those three houses and show them exactly where that wall's going to be, where their building's going to be. They showed the area as being very dark, which is horrible. I'm sure they can get lighting that will go down and not in people's yards for safety. Also, the traffic. Years ago, there was a light at Raven. That right light was taken down. I was told it was from the state. I asked the city council at that time to put the light back up. They said it's fifty thousand dollars. We cannot get across. I pray every time I leave for work that I don't get hit because I'm waiting three lights to get across. I have to sneak in there and pray that someone on this side lets me in or someone on that side isn't going to turn on a red light. We need a light back on Raven. If you're going to put this place up there, we need a light. And what about the food they're talking about? Oh, we're restaurant type. What kind of restaurant? Ain't even told that. Is this going to be stuff that's going to be already prepared and throw it in the microwave? That's not restaurant food. We don't need that kind of stuff. They say they're going to hire thirty-two employees, do that by seven days, three shifts. That's nothing. That's no employees. It's not worth it to us. But you need to consider what you're going to do about the traffic. You've got to put a light up there. You've got to, because you're going to cause someone to get killed at that corner because we cannot get across. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jack, Berlin Moore. I live in the twenty-three thousand block of Beaconsfield, and I'm like everyone else who's talking about this gas station thingamajig. First of all, it's going to bring vermin, more vermin, because they're not going to keep it clean like they do. It's also going to cause, like you said, traffic. Nobody wants to smell gas fumes twenty-four seven. Nobody wants people that you really know, don't know, who patronize these type of places. I know the guy was talking about sheets in the country, but we're not in the country. We're in the city. And Sheets, to me, does not need to be on Nine Mile and Beaconsfield. That's all. If you would take a vote, I'm sure there's nobody here that would want that in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Pam Pavlaskowski. I live right across twenty-two-eight-hundred Beaconsfield, right across from the building site. I wanted to address the, I guess it's the city planning thing where it talks about the harmony with existing characteristics of the area. It's misleading and it's incorrect, their conclusions. Currently, the shopping center closes by nine P.M. with the exception of the gas station already existing in the parking lot. Adding another twenty-four hour gas station a few feet away from two existing gas stations will not change the nature of the area much. However, adding a twenty-four hour restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating completely changes everything about the shopping center, traffic patterns, noise levels, and most importantly, public safety. Easy access to I ninety-four will draw on many from other communities to take advantage of the twenty-four hour gathering place Sheets is offering. Gas station traffic is transitory with the average patron coming and going within five minutes. Adding the restaurant encourages groups to gather and stay for prolonged periods of time. Characterizing the business as takeaway food and then offering seating both indoor and outdoor is misleading as patrons are encouraged to stay and eat on premises. One of the biggest concerns is the potential increase in crime as a direct result of allowing twenty-four seven dining on premises. Has there been a law enforcement study done or has the official opinion of the East Point police chief at least been solicited? This was asked at the planning commission, and it was kind of glossed over. I did not hear a specific answer to that question at the planning commission meeting. So let's talk about the effects on the residential area of budding this site. All we have been hearing about is the zoning of the commercial space and how it fits with the city's master plan for this area. What about the city's master plan for the residential area? Residential areas are also subject to ordinances and rules, and excessive noise is not permitted between the hours of eleven P.M. and seven A.M. How can twenty-four hour outdoor dining exist next to residential zones without breaking ordinances? How can this type of business be allowed in this location when it will clearly go against existing city ordinances? Perhaps a twenty-four hour dining facility is a good idea in an entirely commercial location, but it certainly does not work when it is next to residential areas. Should Sheets be allowed to move into this location?
You have thirty seconds.
I believe outdoor dining should be forced to close no later than eleven P.M. to honor existing noise ordinances. One final note. Sheet says they will bring jobs and tax base to our city, but we already have an existing business there that accomplishes both of these things. Office Depot was not allowed to renew their lease because the owner made a deal with Sheets. Swapping one business for another hardly constitutes job creation.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Hannah. I have a similar business located at two-two-seven-zero-one Greshert, right up the street. Several years ago, I myself tried to improve my business, and I was denied several times by the old manager of the city. She actually threatened me if I were to do anything with the property that she would find a way to close me down. That was actual quote of hers. So why can a business that's already open not improve but let these guys come in from out of state? I don't understand the logic behind that, but I just wanted to put my information out there for that.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Alia. I live at one-nine-zero-three-zero Holbrook. Office Depot and what would be Sheets would be right in my backyard. I did get a visit from the representative for Sheets, and I do appreciate you coming and actually talking to somebody at their door. But I sat out in my backyard after we spoke. I just wanted to really imagine what actually would be happening if this were to go forward. Now, I have a toddler son who is outside pretty regularly, especially in the summer months. And initially, the plan was for a six-foot wall to go behind my house and it to be abutted with these shrubberies, really close together trees that'll grow together as a barrier wall. But there's no lighting. So ultimately, what that would create is a perfect place for a person to just hang out until they wanted to come over the wall, and they wouldn't be seen until they got into the lighting of my backyard. But we've, it's since been raised up to eight feet. But that, even that, with the trees being at a higher point, would still allow for easy movement from that point to the back of my yard, and the lighting is not acceptable. It's just dark in that particular area where he said that they can't put lighting there because it would interrupt the lighting in my property. But I'd rather have lighting than insufficient lighting where there's just this dark mass space behind my house. And then we talked about the turnout onto Beaconsfield. I didn't think we needed a turnout onto Beaconsfield, but he did explain that it will turn one way. So it'll, from inside the parking lot, it would only allow turning out to the right. But even with that, it just creates a lot of more traffic right at Beaconsfield and Nine Mile, which is what everybody else has mentioned. And then the final thing that was a concern for me is the in-between time, the demolition time for all of this. When that wall goes down, the time between that time and the time that the other wall comes up, just the potential for things to go wrong there. And the twenty-four hours is always a bad idea. If nothing else is open, people that are doing things that they shouldn't be doing, they're going to try to find somewhere to go, and that would be like a beacon of light in the sky at night. So I definitely don't approve. I can't approve for it personally.
Thank you.
Hello. Nicole DeAngelo. I am on Empire, so a little ways down. And I was originally just thinking that it was silly to put two gas stations right next to each other and across from another mobile. Then I was thinking about the traffic. I didn't even know it was twenty-four hours. That's going to be crazy. But the other thing that I wanted to bring up is they just built that big Una truck stop that was supposed to have all these great fancy things. That's not going real great over there. They're not crazy busy. They have a burger place in there. I was there one time, and the second time I went back, it was super sketchy, never went back. So like, do we need the same kind of business one mile up the expressway? I don't think so. So that's it. That's for me.
Thank you.
Hi, Fred Toma. I'm a business owner in the city of East Point, and I just wanted to go on the record and let city council know that I have collected three hundred signatures of customers that do not want a Sheets in the area. And just wanted to go on the record and make sure that the city did get that information. They did refuse to take the petitions from you when I walked it over to the city, maybe three weeks ago. I don't know if that's normal, you know, practice, but I have them with me now. I also emailed them to the city, but got no response that it was even delivered or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharkey Hadad. I usually like to start every time I speak with a positive note, but sadly to say, I don't have a positive note to start with because despite the fact that most of the people out here are residents, taxpayers, care about the city, your hometown city, and all of their concerns are worth zero because I know that you already have made up your mind about voting yes for this before you entered this hall. I know that. And those of you who have decided before you entered here, shame on you. You're supposed to listen to the voices of the taxpayers, the citizens of this city, and take it into consideration. Instead, you decided to go with corporate America, like if corporations have not screwed common working men enough in this country, that you need to have more in this hometown city or family hometown city. I challenge the chief of police. I challenge him, and I know that you have not done your homework as far as public safety. I challenge the chief of police to come up here and say that a twenty-four hour restaurant, gas station, and liquor store is not going to increase the risk of crime in this hometown city. I spoke with many chief of police in the metropolitan area. I support all law enforcement agents, and I'm always helping police departments. I spoke with three of them where Sheets is going, and all three said, Sharkey, we are against it because nothing good happens at a public gathering that serves food or drinks after twelve midnight. So next time you open, if that, you're going to approve it, when there's a crime or mass shooting at this twenty-four hour gathering of bad actors, you need to remember that because you're the one who voted for another gas station. And people say, well, there's Speedway. There's crime in Speedway. Speedway is not open twenty-four hours with a restaurant that houses thirty-two to thirty-five people.
You have thirty seconds.
And then they serve them food. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I know I talked last meeting a little bit about the special land use. That's what we're talking about here, special land use for a gas station. And I went over city planners' special land use review, very favorable. It almost seems like we're not talking about a gas station. It's quite in contrast to reviews that have been done with other gas stations. Most recently, April of twenty-twenty-three, which he is referring to, where they talk about carbon emissions, they talk about gas stations do not improve the community, it's a detriment to global climate change. U.S. has a goal to be carbon neutral by twenty-fifty. Talking about noise, odor of gasoline, the gasoline fumes, that it's an additional brown field, our master plan, we are supposed to be getting away from brown fields, not adding new ones to it. All of these terms, none of them are mentioned in the special land use review for the Sheets location. Do we not have carbon emissions anymore? Is it not, are we okay with the new brown field being added there? They also talked about with this other location that there were too many gas stations in the area. There were two directly across the street from the proposed gas station back in April of twenty-twenty-three. This one puts Sheets right in the middle of two gas stations that are less than a thousand feet apart. On all of Nine Mile, just the East Point side, there are five gas stations in a one-point-seven-mile stretch of Nine Mile. I'm not even counting the one that's in St. Clair Shores on the other side of ninety-four. Mentioned about public safety, I don't think Chief Haynes has been asked about it as far as the traffic that's going to be there, the congestion in the parking lots, the space behind the building between the residents and the back of the building. I'd really like to hear from a public safety view how reasonable this is. I realize, again, that you have to go by the special land use criteria. I do not feel that this project meets all of the criteria, and you do have legitimate reason to not approve this.
You have thirty seconds.
Based on everything that we've done before, based on how the city has dealt with other gas stations, why is this one any different? It's a gas station. Doesn't matter how good the food is, doesn't matter how much they contribute to our local charities. It is a gas station, and we need to treat it that way for the safety, health, welfare of our residents, our other businesses, and for public safety. And I'd really like one of you to ask Chief Haynes for his opinion on it so we can all hear. Thank you for your time.
John DeHunt, East Point. I only have three things because I left my soapbox at home because it's not my job to vote yes or no on any of this. It was my job, based on the ordinances as they stand at this point, the special land use, the zoning, all of it, as it stands at this point, this project legally has merit, legally. That's done. I take great exception to the inferences that ethnicity had something to do with the decision that was made by the planning commission to recommend special land use. I take great exception with any of it, and I find it incredibly disheartening that that is the go-to. So I'm done with that. And the last thing I'm going to say, again, this is your decision, not mine. I passed a number of Sheets locations, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, I do not frequent your establishment because I like my points at Speedway. I did not see any trash. I did not see any vagrants loitering about, and these were in the greater Columbus area. I went through early in the morning, and I came through in the mid-evening. That is all I'm going to say. So again, I take great exception with your inference, and I take great exception with the assumption that everyone has made a decision. Whether it is approved or not is irrelevant. To assume something without these folks having the ability to have any sort of conversation in meaningful fashion is very inappropriate.
Thank you. Would any, anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. We have no scheduled minutes to approve, scheduled hearings, unfinished business, so we'll move all the way to reports from administration. We'll first start with the city manager's report, Ms. Mariah Walton.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have a quick report just coming from last week. Congratulations and thank you to Officer Severini and K-9 Digo. We welcome him and appreciate his service to the city of East Point. We had the first police department and court development building meeting. That went well. Our next meeting is scheduled for September twentieth at one P.M. That is a Friday, so if you're interested in the development of that building, please come out and join us. There is a DDA concert coming up here at City Hall next week on August twenty-eighth at six P.M. So we'd like all of you to come out and join us. There's an incredible band that will be joining us. I'd also like to say congratulations to firefighter Saharsky. He received his paramedic license after his first exam. Those that may be in the field are familiar that it's an incredibly tough test that sometimes takes multiple times to take. He is the first firefighter that was hired under our LOU, establishing that for the city of East Point to support him going through firefighter and paramedic training. And then our department actually has assisted with that training. So it's a very successful LOU, and we congratulate him. We also have two more firefighters that will be taking that test on Friday, and we're hoping for the same result. So again, congratulations firefighter Saharsky. So again, congratulations firefighter Saharsky, and thank you to the department for doing such an incredible job training. With that, mayor and council, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Right. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Walton? We'll move on to finance director's report, Mr. Blum.
Yes, mayor and council, since last week, I have nothing to report.
All right. City attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. I would like to schedule a closed session for one of the meetings in September to discuss the adult-use recreational marijuana ordinance. So I'm just looking for a little guidance as to if the council wants to schedule a closed session in September or some other time or set it for a special meeting.
What would be the basis for the closed session?
Attorney-client privilege, based on the email I circulated this afternoon.
I have not seen that yet. I'd probably want to read the email before making a decision because I know even if closed session's an option, I might feel that it should be discussed openly. So I don't know what you sent in the email that came today, so.
Yeah, it's actually a draft of two proposed ordinances, but I had some questions that I wanted to address with the full council regarding a couple of those questions. Certainly, once the ordinance is in draft form, it'll come before on a regular agenda item, but for now, I was just looking for it to discuss that in the closed session.
What does the rest of council feel?
Could just not plan on one right now, and I think if someone does want one, could request it between now and then.
Could do that.
Between now and the next meeting at least.
That's all I had this evening, so I haven't answered any questions.
That would be what, September? What would be the date?
Third.
The third?
All right. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Albright? We'll move on to item A, special land use approval for Sheets, 19001 Nine Mile Road. I know that we have representatives from Sheets here. Mr. Bruckelmeier requested to address council. I see you had something prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is David Bruckelmeier, 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Sheets is new to the area, so we'd like to go through a few things about Sheets, just a little bit about our culture. We'd also like to address a few things that were brought up at Planning Commission, some plan changes that we've made, and we'll be submitting to city staff, you know, post this meeting should we be approved. And then also, I'd like to address some of the concerns of the residents that are here tonight and also some that aren't, some that I was able to speak to on Thursday last week. So I'll go ahead and start with a little bit about Sheets. So Sheets was started in 1952 in central Pennsylvania. Bob Sheets bought what was essentially a dairy market and turned it into a deli, carryout, you know, that really just serviced the community's needs for convenience. And still to that day, we hold true to those values of, you know, providing food, carryout items, you know, things that the community needs on a 24/7/365 basis. Today, we operate over 730 locations, and we are still family-owned and family-operated. There are currently roughly 16 members of the Sheets family that are running the business day-to-day. A few things about our buildings and just our site. So we do feature four-sided premium architecture, full brick-and-stone sections. We have metal awnings, all kinds of good articulation, and obviously a nice-looking, you know, facade that really completes the brand. We feature outdoor dining, and of course, high-quality materials inside the store. We'll go through a little bit of a, a little bit of a quick tour just to see what it looks like. So we feature 30 interior seats. That's really just highlighting our restaurant focus. Our kitchen is 24/7/365. If you want a breakfast sandwich at 2:00 p.m., you can get a breakfast sandwich at 2:00 p.m. and vice versa. So it's really something that our customers truly enjoy, and if someone's on their way and they need to stop in and shoot email on our free Wi-Fi, that's something that somebody can do in our locations that feature EV charging. Somebody can come and charge their car and come in, grab a cup of coffee, and wait. So those are some of the features of the inside of our building. Again, a full kitchen, a full espresso bar. We feature, you know, like really well-made premium coffees, and any kind of convenience item that you could ever possibly want, we have it. I would challenge you to come to one of our locations and try to find something that you want that's not there. So it's a really incredible offering. In addition to that, you know, just to set up who our culture is, Sheets really loves to give back to the communities. Some of the ways we do that, fighting food insecurity through donations to things like Forgotten Harvest and supporting local charities such as the Special Olympics in each state that we're involved in. In addition, we make local donations very routinely. So we like to be invested in the communities, we hire in local communities, and people know the area, so we love to invest. We are very conscious of our 24/7/365 business. Along with that, we have a lot of safety procedures such as 60 high-definition cameras that are monitored from our Clayesburg, Pennsylvania office. We have lots of Sheets employees that are monitoring cameras 24/7/365, which is something incredible. It's something that's not offered anywhere else in the convenience industry, but we do. You know, we have a lot of employees that walk the lots once an hour. They have safety buttons and safety procedures that they have to follow. So we really do take a lot of pride in the safety of our locations. A lot of our sites feature EV charging. So right now, Sheets has over 100 Tesla charging stations at our locations. We are the number-one Tesla charging vendor that's third-party in the country. So we really are heavily invested in EV charging, and it really goes along with our offering to complement that kind of charging capability. At this point, I think we've charged 2 million vehicles, so we really are invested in EV charging. We also like to make a really big commitment into our sites with landscaping. We understand that along with our premium offering, we want to have landscaping, which is the face of our site, you know, be really aesthetic and look good for the community. This is a site that we have enhanced a lot of landscaping, knowing that we do have neighbors, and I will run you through the landscaping plan here in a little bit. Actually, right now, we're going to do that. So at Planning Commission, we did receive a few comments about everything from landscaping to pedestrian access on Beacons Field and outdoor seating areas. So in this plan, actually, I can turn it over here, we've enhanced our landscaping and increased our berming to buffer a little bit more from our residents to the east that we understand are there. In addition, we've increased the height of the wall that hits the back of this property to eight feet from six, and then we've increased the density of trees along the back of our property. We've also provided a lot of nice bioswales and things like that around the property to meet the new city ordinances for this area on Nine Mile Road. So we really have taken a lot of the comments from the Plan Commission into account. We are very interested in moving forward, obviously. And one other thing I would like to note, a concern came up from Plan Commission about public seating outdoor on the east side. We did agree to move that and reduce the number of seats onto the south side that's even further away from any residents that are there. I would like to just take a couple of minutes and go through, you know, what is this really going to look like to scale? These are some renderings of the current Office Max. As you can see, we've greatly reduced pavement area. We're going to increase the landscaping very significantly, and the size of the building is dropping. We also intentionally placed, you know, our fuel island out on Nine Mile Road as far away from the residents as possible. Here sits the current Office Depot site. This site does have a few maintenance issues. It has some stormwater runoff problems if you've ever driven past it when it rains. It's more of a lake out there. So that's something that's going to be addressed with our plan. We're going to make a lot of stormwater improvements to bring it up to current standard. And this is what, you're looking at Nine Mile and Beacons Field at the corner, and this just gives you a good idea at scale of what our site's going to look like. And this is an accurate nighttime rendering that takes into account the type of light fixtures and the heights of all the buildings and everything like that. This is a realistic lighting plan. You know, obviously, we're on a projector. It may look a little different on a computer screen, but we really do provide adequate lighting. It's something that's really critical for safety and, again, goes hand-in-hand with the cameras that we install on our sites. And this is looking down Beacons Field, and this doesn't take into account the additional landscapings that we've added in, but you can see we're adding quite a few very dense areas of landscaping, and it will be even more dense than this. We didn't have the ability to get our renderings updated in time, but we are making the commitment for that significant landscaping. And again, this is a photometric, you know, nighttime accurate representation of what it will look like looking into our site from Beacons Field at night. And just another couple of views to give you some scale. You can see that eight-foot wall on the backside of the property along with the dense evergreen trees along the berm.
Can I pause just to ask a question about the nighttime renderings?
Absolutely.
Is that just what you guys have designed in terms of the light from your facility, not taking into, because it doesn't look like it takes into account the street lighting and stuff?
That is correct. It would be impossible for us to account for every type of different lighting variation around us from things like streetlights and other people's floodlights and things like that. So this is just our lighting that we can control.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, just one last final rendering. I'd be happy to show you this on the laptop if you want to see it just a little bit better. A few other things that I'd like to address. I know the EEOC lawsuit against Sheets, what was addressed here tonight? And what I would like to tell you is that there is no room for discrimination of any kind at Sheets. It's not part of our culture. It's not acceptable, and certainly, we take the lawsuit with the EEOC very seriously, and we've been trying to negotiate it for roughly eight years. Unfortunately, further than that, I'm unable to comment because it is ongoing litigation. What I would like to note with you is that, you know, we've been voted by Forbes Magazine as one of the top 100 places to work in the country. Few retailers make it onto that list. You know, we've been voted Companies That Care by People Magazine, again, one of the few retailers that make it on the list. It takes heavily into account what employees think about working at our locations and working at Sheets. So I would ask you to take that in context. Obviously, I can't comment on the litigation, but I will ask you to take that type of culture and look at it from that perspective as well. You know, some other things were brought up about traffic in the plan. I'll go back to this here real quick. I would like to note that we've taken some of those concerns to heart. Sorry about that. You can see we've added in a curb, and this was mentioned earlier in the meeting, that is going to restrict the left out of our site going north on Beacons Field. That was to address some residents' concerns and certainly something we're willing to take into account. We have done a traffic study on the site. We did note that our access is supported by the traffic study, and it, you know, it says it is operating safely. We do understand it is a little difficult to get out onto Nine Mile at certain times of the day. That is a condition that exists today as it stands. We do take a lot of traffic off of the road, say they're coming right into our site, and typically, customers take the convenient route, and they're going to go right out because we're on their way. So that's why we pick corners. It's something where customers going eastbound are going to pick our site. Customers going westbound are going to be much less likely to pick our site because it's less convenient for them. It makes sense. It's on your way to work, and if some, maybe if someone's coming home, they're going to pick us instead, depending on what time of the day. So we really do take a lot of traffic off of the road and put it right back on the direction it was going. And that's something that's reflected within our traffic study. From a lighting perspective, I know there's some concerns about the lighting in the area at the back of the site. We do have to stick to the city's lighting ordinances and make sure that we don't impact our neighbors to the north. So we have taken that into account on our lighting drawing. We're happy to revisit that with staff and take a look. Maybe there's something we can do to alleviate some concerns, but really, by nature, we do have to meet the city ordinance and not, you know, shed a bunch of light onto the neighbor's property to the north. So that's, you know, we have taken a look at that. We have taken account with staff for that. I also want to address the jobs. We are truly providing 30 to 35 full-time, you know, preferably full-time positions. Sometimes, we can't always get that many, but we really do like to have 30 to 35 full-time jobs eligible for full benefits, health, vision, dental, 401K tuition reimbursement, and the list just continues to go on, as well as room for moving up. You know, we have a lot of management positions, and they're able to move up through operations. So there are people that do very well at Sheets, working in our stores. We do take pride in how much we offer. We're going to offer a very competitive wage here in southeast Michigan, so we're excited to be able to make that offering. From a safety perspective, you know, a lot of people mention, you know, a certain type of business brings crime. That's just not the case. You know, when you look at anything bad that happens, it can happen anywhere. It could happen out on the interstate. It could happen out on Nine Mile Road. You know, it's unfortunately something within our society that crime does exist, but what we do do is we invest in lighting, we invest in cameras, and we work with local police departments to address any security concerns. We truly do work with local police. We will release camera footage to them at a moment's notice as long as they have the authority of arrest. That's something that sets us really far apart from the convenience industry. We will have their phone numbers. We will know their names. It's something that's pretty incredible about our organization. With that said, I would love to answer any questions you may have about either the site plan or Sheets as a culture or a business.
Mr. Councilman Carley.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Can you flip back to the picture you had? You had a couple of them showing a gas station.
It's not going. There it goes. Is this?
No, the one that is dark except for the pumps. There. Just a question, where's the restaurant?
Well, the restaurant is actually.
I mean, there's no, I know it's behind the gas station, but there's no lights on, and it just looks like there's nothing there.
It's a little bit, you know, we're looking at it on a projector, so it's a little bit hard to tell exactly how, you know, light it's going to be. We are confident that around our building and around our fuel pumps that we do have adequate lighting. We do have to make a couple of adjustments because some city ordinances have changed just a little bit since we made the lighting drawing, but we are confident that it is lit well enough that our customers will be safe, you know, on our site. And the actual restaurant portion is right at the front of the building, right there, kind of in that area I'm circling.
Okay. Explain to me, "Made to Order Food." What does that mean?
So it's our brand of premium food offerings. So it's everything from salads, rice bowls. We also have burgers and fries. We have mac and cheese. There are Instagram pages that actually are fan favorites. People post their favorite Sheets food. So we really, truly are a restaurant. We take pride in our "Made to Order" food. You can customize our menu, I think, like 1.9 million different combinations. It's pretty incredible.
A million?
1.9 million different combinations of food. It's pretty incredible.
Okay. I'm not going to ask you though. So if I went in there at breakfast and I ordered, I want to order two eggs scrambled, whole wheat toast, sausage, can you, is that "Made to Order"?
Yes, absolutely. You can get that menu with anything you want on the top, any kind of topping you could ever possibly imagine, vegetables. You can get all kinds of sauces and things like that that you can add to your order.
Okay. Show me the picture again of the, the open picture where we can see Nine Mile Road.
The overhead picture?
Yeah. How many entrances do you have into your gas station and restaurant off of Nine Mile Road?
We have one location, and it's loading. Sorry, this is a few technical difficulties here. There it goes. Okay. We have one cut off of Nine Mile Road. We do have cross-access to the west, which is existing as it stands today.
Okay. And that's, do you have any idea what the size of that is, the width of it?
If we have the site plan, we will grab that for you in one moment. That's not labeled on there. I think it is roughly 45, 40 to 45 feet, I believe, is the existing cut.
I believe it's the existing cut that's already there, correct?
It's a small modification to the curb, yes.
Okay.
It's very similar.
Someone mentioned a truck stop. Talk to me about the truck stop. Like, do you have parking overnight for a guy who's been driving a long time, so he gets gas and wants to park his car there overnight?
Sheets does have fueling stations that cater to truck drivers, and this is definitely not one of them. This is a site where if an over-the-road truck driver came in, pulled in, and parked overnight, we would ask him to leave or tow him because he's going to plug up the site. He's not allowed to be there. He shouldn't be there. This is really focused on auto users, not heavy truck dealers. We don't have high-flow pumps. We don't have any kind of amenities for those truck drivers, certainly not a site we want them to pull into.
Well, they'd have their engines going all night anyway.
We would ask them to leave the property.
If you don't mind, I got just two more questions. The one that I, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and I couldn't hear too well. Talk to me about the entrance off of Beacons Field. You know, I mentioned to a couple that that is, no, I don't like. You know, I mentioned to a couple that that, that it's, no, I don't like it. So explain to me how you can make a, somebody was talking about you put a, I don't know, a wall up where they can only turn right. How would that happen?
So this, this is something that, you know, we regularly accomplish with our traffic management plans, and you can see right here on the screen, we've added in a curbed island. And what that's going to force is people to take a right out of the site. They won't be able to take a left northbound, and so they will be forced back to Nine Mile Road if they go through that cut. Now, they will be able to come up north and south on Beacons Field and turn into our site, but they will be forced to turn right out towards Nine Mile. Does that make sense? It'll actually be like raised curb that somebody is not going to want to drive over that forces them out to Nine Mile so that they can't come back north into Beacons Field.
You don't think that if I got my car halfway out into the street, that I could go left? I could just?
You know, there's certainly bad actors out on the road. There is nothing, unfortunately, that we can do to control all that. This is a common engineering practice.
What is possible?
It is certainly possible for people to do all kinds of illegal things, and that's, that is certainly one of them.
And you guys would be really upset if you didn't have that at all, since you only have one entrance to your gas station and restaurant off of Nine Mile Road.
So in this type of industry, when you have one cut, when you force all of your traffic through one cut, it can actually overload that situation. So it actually takes a little bit of load off of the other cut and balances things out. We did, it's a little bit hard to see here, it's a little darker on this, but right across the street here is lined up with speedways entrance already. So we have made sure we don't have conflicting turning movements and things like that, so we've lined it up with that business already.
Show me the picture of the, the entrance of the, the gas station and the restaurant.
The picture of the entrance from overhead or out front?
I don't know, but you showed it to me just a minute ago.
This one?
It's more nor, it's more west. There it is. Yes, more west.
So we've lined up with, you can see that driveway with speedway, so we've intentionally done that, just to make sure we don't have a lot of conflicting turning movements. Obviously, we're taking a right out only onto, you know, Beacons Field going to Nine Mile.
And when you've got a busy day, there's going to be, I don't know, seven, eight, 10 cars waiting to get out.
This is certainly a busy area. There's no doubt about that.
Why wouldn't you make two? Why wouldn't you make two?
Why wouldn't I make two on Nine Mile?
Introduces, yeah.
That's not something that we are able to do per city codes and all kinds of high, you know, driveway spacing standards, so we aren't able to put two cuts out on Nine Mile Road, unfortunately.
City code said you couldn't do that?
Becky, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
I can speak to that as well, if you would like.
Yeah.
So we do have a limitation on the distance between each driveway, which is a new measure that we've put in place to discourage a multitude or overplacement of driveways, as you see on some other sites, because that can cause a lot of accidents. So we actually have a distance requirement from an intersection, so from Nine Mile and Beacons Field, as well as distance requirements from existing curb cuts. So we encourage them to utilize the existing curb cut on Nine Mile and not add another because that is what the issue at Beacons Field and Nine Mile and Onyamikor is, is the amount of curb cuts and people taking lefts and rights almost every 10, 15 feet. And there's just too many access points. So we encourage them to utilize the existing curb cut to help control and regulate traffic better, preventing cars from turning into each other.
So would you agree with what I just said, that at any particular time when they're really busy at the gas station and it's lunchtime, that there's not going to be five, six, seven, eight cars waiting to get out of Nine Mile Road?
That would be a question for the traffic engineers and...
Well, who would that be?
I mean, they, like they said, they discussed...
Who are the traffic engineers?
I mean, AEW would...
Oh, AEW, okay. All right.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not an engineer. But...
I'm not either.
But again...
No, hold on. Nope, we're not going to do that here. Stop, sir. Sir. And I know people have, like, again, people feel strongly about, you know, this issue, but please let him speak and, you know, at the end, there'll be another hearing of the public. Not right now, no.
You know, I'm, I'm trying to ask questions of the people who got up and asked questions and, except for the one lady that told us to bend over. I'm trying, I, I'm trying, no, I don't want to talk to you. You can maybe, maybe you can leave.
Thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead, officer.
Thank you, officer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from council? I can go unless you...
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So I was at the Planning Commission, and they were there for, it was over three-hour meeting. It was very lengthy. The Planning Commission does a good job asking a lot of questions. They were guided, of course, by our city planner. It was, there was a lot of information that we received, a lot of answers. Sheets were very accommodating to comply with requests that were made. One in particular that I would like to address is the surety bond. We, we spoke about the possibility, because there are other gas stations nearby and whatnot, that should the Sheets establishment be approved, if, say, within a year or so that they were to go out of business or something like that, that they would provide a surety bond so that that would put the property back to its state right now so that we wouldn't have to remove like the gas tanks and things like that, which is a very unique situation. So I would like to point that particular aspect of it out because it wasn't something that they had to do, but they were accommodating to do something like that.
Any other comments? Well, I'll kind of speak to my thoughts on this. First of all, I do have a lot of respect for the Planning Commission. I know they spend a lot of time reviewing this, and I know that they still have more, I think there's still more to do with the site plan review. What's before us today is just the special land use approval. And I think as the process goes forward, I know that your company is continuing to take input from the residents nearby and adjust your plans accordingly, and I appreciate that. I know that in regards to Nine Mile as a whole, it's been very contentious. I don't think anyone's surprised to hear I, or I think people are familiar with my views on Nine Mile. One of my biggest gripes and one of the reasons we've had so many discussions, not just about your store, but about Nine Mile as a whole, is the amount of vacant buildings that we've had and have allowed to sort of sit is just unacceptable. We've had, just the south of this Sheets proposal, Bank of America, which has been vacant for a number of years. I think we have to, a gas station might not be my number one, I guess, preference in terms of developing an area, but I do believe, as Mr. Dahin got up and said, that the site plan proposal legally complies with what, what's in our ordinances right now. I have concerns about the other gas stations and what would happen to them. I'm concerned about the competitiveness, but also, I don't think it's appropriate for this body to make any decisions on approvals based on trying to control the market competing. Realist, I just legally, I don't think that's something that we are allowed to consider or should consider. I do not think we, I think it would be irresponsible for us to allow this property to, because Office Max is now on their way out, to allow this to become a big vacant building. We have several other sites that have been very hard once they're vacant to develop. I mean, we have the big boy, we have the bank, and we have several buildings along Nine Mile that have remained vacant for a number of years. We know that retail space is not as valuable as it used to be. We also have a lot of vacancies on Kelly. So council, my opinion on this is I just think, I think for the purpose of sort of protecting the development of Nine Mile, I think light is very dangerous. I think vacant buildings, especially large ones, with areas behind them that are closer residential areas, I don't think we can allow this to turn into a vacant alley with essentially a empty warehouse there. So since there hasn't been a motion made, I will go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve the proposed special land use for a gas station with retail and "Made to Order Food" services at 190019 Mile. That's parcel number 02-14-28-353-038. Based on the findings of fact of the planning review letter dated August 6, 2024, with the following conditions: First, that the developer must commit a surety bond to pay for, but not limited to the following; if the project were to cease or the business were to close, the removal of the underground storage tanks, the completion of Phase 1 environmental site assessment, and the remediation of minimal anticipated damage. In condition number two, the developer must commit to the replacement of the sidewalk abutting to the site that is either currently in need or, or in need of repair or disturbed due to the construction.
Support.
Before we call for the vote, if I might, I just want to make a comment. Someone came up and after the comment, they said that we have too many restaurants at East Point. Do we have too many restaurants in East Point? Do we have too many bars in East Point? Do we have too many beauty salons in East Point? I go to Royal Oak two or three times a week. That's where our church is. Did you ever go to Royal Oak on Main Street? Count how many restaurants they have there, and they're all busy. They're all busy. I love it. I've been to every restaurant in East Point, and I love them all. And so I guess my comment would be, I don't think there's too many restaurants in East Point.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. So I guess I'll get right to my view. I guess I thought we'd have the planners introduce their special land use findings, but I'll just get to my view here. I, I think that, looking at this holistically, I don't think we should approve the special land use, mainly because the project's not an improvement to the community because the U.S. is moving forward to becoming carbon neutral, and developing a new gas station contradicts these efforts to reduce the impacts of global climate change. And maybe we're talking about, I don't know, does anyone know how many gas stations we have in the community already? Does the Sheets representative know? There's 15. If, well, minimally, I might have missed one or two. If we add another one, it's been touched on about having tanks underground. I know we're talking about the surety bond. If another gas station goes out of business, what happens with those tanks? We've got the gas station at Stevens and Grashit, where there used to be one. I'm guessing there's still an underground tank there. I am not positive, though, on that. So with all that holistically, I think we should deny the special land use, and I guess, long story short, I guess that's my opinion on this.
Any other comments?
Sure.
With respect to the competition, I would like to piggyback on what Councilman Curly said. There's competition everywhere, so, you know, even when prior council had voted to put in, say, the Tim Hortons on Nine Mile that was a couple blocks away from East Detroit Bakery, I was mortified. Yet, they both live in harmony on the same mile road. Again, Nine Mile Road in particular, we have so many vacant buildings. It's, it's disheartening. I think that I would love to see many businesses come here. I think we do have a wonderful community. I welcome any businesses that do want to come here. Again, I don't mean any disrespect to the Caldian community or anything like that. I will still go to my usual Caldian gas station. Regardless, however, I will also support Sheets as well. I think we can all live in harmony. Secondly, I do, I do note that that surety bond is very important. I reached out to some council members out in Chesterfield Township where there's another location being approved, and they did not offer that surety bond to Chesterfield. So they were quite impressed that we had received that offer here, so that was very nice to know that, that they cared enough to go the extra mile for us.
Just one, one last comment before we take, take the vote. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be out there when you construct that entrance off of Beacons Field, and I'm going to try to go left after I get out halfway from it. And if I can, then we're going to put it on the agenda to tear the darn thing down. But I'm, when I was sitting here in the Planning Commission for three hours, that's the one thing that I was laughing at, that you were saying, "Well, we're going to put a, we're going to put a little brick wall there and people aren't going to be able to turn left." Well, bull, you watch. So, yeah, you write, yeah, I'm glad you're writing something down. You should put down there, Curly teed off about your entrance.
Councilman Curly, I thought you were going to ask if they'd put a cow up on top of it.
Yeah. Well, they better not get rid of that cow. That's another subject. I'm ready.
Sure. If Mr. Councilman Curly ever offers anyone a ride, just remember what he said here today. All right, please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Breschadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 24-1240 to men chapter 18, Article 4, weed control and refuse storage. Would anyone like to open this up with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think the city attorney has some brief comments on this ordinance.
I do, Mayor and council. Mayor Protam Madoff and I spoke about the proposed ordinance that's up for second reading now this evening, and he had a couple of changes that we discussed thoroughly, and with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to read what those proposed changes are.
Sure. And can I make one comment before? So I think these changes don't really materially affect what it's, I think it just makes it a little less confusing. I think there were some like references that, references this section or that section. That was the goal of these minor changes that I discussed with Mr. Albright. It doesn't change the amount of time we talked about or like things like that.
Okay.
It, it, it does provide clarity.
Okay.
So it's under section 18-85. The, I'll just read it into the record so everyone's aware what it is. So the 1885, as proposed, would read, "All weeds, grass, or brush six inches or more in height growing or lying upon any property in the city, any rubbish, trash, concrete, junk logs, old building materials, used appliances, used machinery, or parts thereof, or any other materials, refuse, or debris lying upon any property, either public or private, in the city or hereby declared to be public nuisances. Every owner, possessor, occupier, or person in charge of land in the city upon which such conditions or nuisances exist or are permitted to remain shall cause the same to be cut down, destroyed, or removed after receiving notice from the city as provided in section 18-84 sub-A or as otherwise provided in section 1882. Also, rubbish, trash, concrete, junk logs, old building materials, used appliances, used machinery, or parts thereof, or any other refuse or debris must be removed pursuant to section 18-84. If such owner, possessor, occupier, or other person fails to do so, then the city manager through the proper department or agency of the city enter the property and cause the same to be cut down, destroyed, or removed in the same manner as provided in section 1883. Director of Finance shall collect such sums of money covering the costs and administrative fees thereof as provided in this article." And then the ordinance, proposed ordinance up for second reading this evening does reflect the changes suggested at the last meeting as well, Mayor.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions on that?
If anybody wants, I've kind of got, like, a printout of track changes if you wanted to briefly see. Okay, this will be even better. It's in color if anyone.
I think the only question was the notice upon, it's supposed to be eighteen point eight four with the changes?
Yes, as provided.
Oh, yeah, because our procedures, all right.
I think it, yeah, referred to a part that wasn't about notices. And then, so, yeah, it's like now referencing that. And then another part references the notices also for rubbish and trash.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Or would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I could do that, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. I'll motion that we give second reading and adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty to amend chapter eighteen, article four, weed control and refuse storage of the city's code of ordinances, including the changes read into the record by our city attorney, Rich Albright.
Is there a second?
Support.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Great. Moving on to item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-one to amend chapter one, section one through ten notices.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we give second reading and adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash twelve forty-one to amend chapter one, section one dash ten notices of the city's code of ordinances.
Is there a second?
Support.
All right. Any comments?
I don't know if this is the right place to ask the question. One of our citizens got up there and said that our contractor was mowing grass without permission from the city. Has anybody else heard that? Kim?
Or Ms. Walton, did you have a?
I think what he was referring, he had made complaints and just didn't hear back from the building department. He had made complaints about neighboring properties and didn't hear back on the complaints. It wasn't contractors cutting and us not being aware of them.
I did, I understood his comments to be about, we had discussed previously that the contractors were earmarking and cutting and then notifying the city. I think that's what he was referring to, if I understood him correctly.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions or?
No.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Moving on to item D, discussion on proposed ordinance twenty-four dash twelve forty-two to add chapter six, article five, special events. Would anyone, I guess, like to open up the discussion?
Well, I think, yeah, one thing over the years, I guess, is that the special events, it hasn't been very clear if you need an application or not. I guess, first of all, I think is the biggest thing. Then we approve it. I mean, if people have put in an application, we've approved it, even if it's not necessary. But I'd like to prevent people from doing that in the city, doing checks if it's unnecessary. So hopefully, this would clear it up. I guess, I liked it a lot in general. I think it would be good, though, if we could just make it even clearer who would need to apply for a special event app. It does have, I think, right at the very beginning, let me just scroll down here, a special event means any event open to the public, taking place on public property or outdoors on private property. I would just read that. I think, like, obviously, like, anything like the Grashit Cruise or Memorial Day Parade obviously applies. But I think reading that, if you rented a gazebo out and just sort of invited anyone to the gazebo, say, you're not doing anything special, no inflatables, no anything, it almost sounds like it applies. I frankly don't know what the wording would be to exclude things like that. But I think we obviously don't want to get in the business of just a group basically inviting the public out to their gazebo they rented for however much it costs now, I forget, at Rare, and needing, like, a special event application, or even putting one in if the city doesn't think so. So other than that, I think this is really good because it's been confusing, I think, at certain points and clears it up a little bit.
I agree with, well, I don't know if you want to kick around language, or I'm not sure off the top of my head what kind of language that might require to make it clear.
I guess I was kind of thinking, like, if one of the other things in the ordinance applies, I don't know, you know, like, if you had an inflatable, we talk about inflatables, if you wanted city services, like the DPW or police, or I don't know what else is in here, you know, things like that, if something else in the ordinance is required.
Okay.
That's not already covered. I guess, like, frankly, if you had a food truck show up and the food truck was already in compliance, I don't even think maybe a special event would be necessary for that if the food truck is parking where it can park.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of thing.
Okay.
I don't know what the, you know, good wording for that would be. I think Mr. Albright's the expert on that.
Thank you. You'd probably want to include a subsection called exceptions with some explanatory language as to what would not be accepted under certain circumstances. That was my recommendation.
All right. You want to work on that?
Of course.
Of course.
I think the only comments I had, I mean, I thought it was a good idea, too. So under penalties, where it says a fee and amount to be determined by council, should that more be a fee and amount that's, like, on our fee schedule? I don't want it to sound like when someone doesn't apply, we have a meeting on how much to charge a fee. That would be odd.
That's the intention, so we should probably just clarify that.
And then, I guess this might be the attorney in me, item B underneath that, which says reserves a right to cancel any event in a manner that is, I might get rid of the word substantially different and might just put the word, I don't know, inconsistent, I don't know what that means, I guess, substantially different. I could see that being a point of contention if we ever have to actually use that section. So just something that might be more clear cut. And that was the only comments I had on it. But I guess if we can kind of work on it and get it prepared for a first reading. Any other comments?
No.
All right. Moving on, and I don't think we need to set a date. There's no rush. So I guess whenever administration wants to put that on.
I'll meet with Mariah. We'll work on some of the language.
All right. Item E, approval of budget amendment BA twenty-five dash oh one. Randy, did you want to make any comments on this?
This is just infrastructure projects that were approved in last year's budget that did not complete by June thirtieth. So it's the balance of those projects being moved into fiscal year twenty-five.
All right. Did anyone on council have any questions, any of those amendments?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor, but I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment number BA twenty-five dash zero one as presented.
Is there support?
Second that.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Great. Moving on to item F, preparation of the master plan requests for proposals. Did anyone want to, I guess, open this up with discussion? I think there's some goal setting tied to the proposed motion for this one.
City manager want to open up on this one?
Thank you. So we brought this actually initially to Planning Commission to review the need for an update for the master plan. We had a conversation, or Planning Commission had a conversation. We spoke with the planner in regards to doing an update or conducting a full rewrite. Planning Commission recommended a full rewrite of the master plan. We did receive grant funding of fifty thousand dollars to do that plan. We also received thirty thousand dollars from SEMCOG to also add in an economic development and placemaking strategy, a part of the master plan process. So being able to tie those two in together in the engagement process will actually kind of streamline our planning process moving forward. And so we're looking today from council, part of those grant agreements require that we follow our purchasing policies, which require an RFP in going out to bid. We did provide council a copy of the quote from McKenna as requested previously. Part of that, I know, wasn't detailed in terms of, like, the economic development strategy. We hadn't had conversations of what that build-out would look like for them to properly bid on something like that. But then we're also looking, as we prepare an RFP, for any specifics that council has that you would like us to build in as a requirement or that you would like to see in that RFP process in the master plan, whether that's engagement, certain things, and emphasis on certain things, so that we're aware and the contractors that bid on those are aware of the expectations of the council in the master plan process.
Sounds good. I had a couple quick questions. What in the recommended motion, the complementary economic development placemaking strategy, was that to be a new document, or were we referring to something we already have?
So the economic development and placemaking strategy is the additional thirty thousand dollar grant that we received from SEMCOG, and that'll be in addition to the master plan. Like, sometimes you can, like, add on, like, an additional, like, housing plan to the master plan, and it just kind of dives further into the plan. So that's the plan for the economic development strategy. But we just kind of want you guys' direction on any specifics that you certainly want included. I know part of the grant that we received from MISTHA had an emphasis on housing, which has been included in our previous master plans. But if there's anything additional, we'd love to include those in the RFP.
Do you have an example for us for, like, these one through five? I've got a couple ideas, but I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure if they're appropriate or relevant, I guess.
Absolutely.
At this point.
Sure thing. So we added some of those that we're recommending in, so similar to how the zoning ordinance update happened, is putting together a steering committee. So you have members that have been on, you know, different boards and commissions, members from council, members from the public that can engage in that process. We've talked about, you could have, like, a requirement on the engagement process or a timeframe on the engagement process that you would be looking for, different types of requirements for the engagement. Sometimes firms lend on electronic means, where you could also require those meetings happen in person around the community to be available to members within the community so that they can access them. We've also added some different things in, in terms of, like, joint meetings held with Planning Commission, City Council. So they really can kind of depend on kind of how council would like to drive or what you would like to see in this plan to ensure that it accurately reflects the interests of the community.
I guess just some of the ideas maybe I had were less on the structure of the process. I didn't know if we were, like, saying we'd want to focus more on, I guess, I was, I had down here focusing more on mixed use so that we can create additional, like, housing options, because right now, you know, we allow for it with our new zoning master plan, all that. But we haven't really had that opportunity at this point. So I don't know if, you know, we can figure out some other things for the master plan that would help with that. I guess that was one idea I had. And of course, I guess, we've talked about Nine Mile a lot, of course. That could be a focus. Kelly Road, seems like that should be like a focus with the specific projects that we've been working on. Obviously, both of those in the next five to 10 years would be major considerations. And then, I guess, like, enhancing public transportation conditions, I guess, was another idea I had. Maybe adjusting some of the zoning, maybe we look at that again, and maybe creating some more parkland. But that might be more of a parks, parks plan, I guess, slash master plan. I think both would be nice to maybe.
So I think maybe my, I kind of had some similar thoughts. I was a little unsure on exactly what kind of goals we're going to go in here. Are these things, like, what you're mentioning, is that stuff that really should come out of the steering committee? Or is that stuff that you want us to list in the motion now? Does that make sense?
Yes. There's certainly things that we can build in to ensure that they're aware of how you're looking for the master plan engagement and design to be built out. So that could help them in the development process in putting a proper bid together for you to evaluate their ability to conduct, I guess, the study of the master plan appropriately.
So I'm essentially fine with everything Councilman DeMonico mentioned, which, to a degree, kind of, almost outlined in all of these. These categories are pretty broad in the existing master plan. I think park expansion or improvements is appropriate. I guess for the purpose of this, I might want to add the plan to be developed in conjunction with the recreational master plan. So I think if we have overlapping goals, then we can submit both those plans with, if there is any great applications to bolster them.
Well, there's no doubt that it is time to do, to look at the master plan and update it to two thousand twenty-four. But I like your ideas. I just looked at this, so I don't have any ideas right now. But, Mr. Mayor, if you're going to look for volunteers from the council, I'd like to be on that committee, if that's what we're going to call a committee.
Oh, that's fine with me. I don't know if we're picking a, you mean, like, the steering committee after we get started?
Yeah, steering.
Yeah. So I don't know. Does someone, you need a motion from us tonight, right?
I mean, I have everything written down. So, I mean, if council's comfortable with us moving forward and including what was mentioned tonight, we can certainly do that.
I think that's fine. I mean, you're just doing the RFP, then we'll approve whatever comes in. So. All right. Any other comments on that item? We'll move on to item G, approve the contractual trade inspections and plan review services with the city of Roseville.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move we approve the proposal from the city of Roseville for contractual trade inspections and plan review services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five and further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
All right. Any questions on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Moving on to item H, approve the Michigan Healthy Climate Corps program agreement and host partner fee. Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move we approve the seven thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents host partner fee for the MHC Corps program and authorize the city manager to sign the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five MHC Corps host partner agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. Please call the roll.
Oh, sorry. One quick comment, I guess, on this. I love that the state is looking at doing solar to help low-income and, you know, disadvantaged communities. I think this, I have crazy ideas sometime. I thought it'd be cool to try and raise money to do that sort of thing because solar panels, I mean, once you have them installed, that reduces the amount of money for your bills every month, right? So I think that's like a perfect thing to help anyone that needs help. I mean, and probably everybody maybe here knows, I have solar panels in my house. They do work. I have nine-dollar electric bills once in a while. Sometimes it's more, it's in the summer. We run the AC. We don't hold back on that. So sometimes it's not the minimum. But I think it's certainly cool, and it sounds like this program would help with that, among many other things. Obviously, there's a lengthy introduction there, so that's all.
All right. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Proshadlik.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes. Payrolls and bills. Would anyone like to make one?
Our motion maker is not here for this motion. Mr. Mayor, I'll motion that we pay the bills in the amount of six million two hundred forty-five thousand three hundred and six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Support. All right. Any questions on bills? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pachadlik?
Yes.
Moving on to the second hearing of the public, I see someone's already standing. The second hearing of the public is now open.
Mike Lamo, East Point resident. I should never have been first on the other hearing of the public, but I understand we're coming along well with our part three. I know we have a lot of money to buy some property at Nine Mile and Kelly for the roundabout. I hope we have a lot. And I'd like to compliment the chief on his handling of some things that nobody paid attention to. Gentlemen, ladies, have a nice evening. Harvey, don't forget your cane. Good evening.
Thank you.
I have to mention this first because I forgot about it in the previous comment period. September is National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so I'm just asking that everybody find a way to, you know, lend your support, your encouragement to these kids who are literally in for the fight of their life. You know, for anyone who has long hair, you know, if your ponytail's seven to 10 inches long, Wigs for Kids is in St. Clair Shore, so I just recently cut off my ponytail earlier this summer in, in honor of a sister I had who died at five and a half of neuroblastoma. So whenever my hair gets long enough, that's why I always cut my ponytail in honor of her. And, you know, for any of the teachers that may be listening, if they could please encourage their, their students, you know, to make cards and send them to St. Jude's. So that had to be said. I am disappointed, you know, in shifting gears that, you know, once again, the majority of residents have spoke out about what we don't want and it's just beyond frustrating that, you know, it, it just, it falls on deaf ears. And, you know, I've been here for 17 years, I've seen a lot of names and faces change who have positions where they could make a difference and they just don't. And, you know, you're, you're losing residents as a result of it. You're losing homeowners because they're just fed up. You know, we've got a nuisance tenant ordinance that, you know, it's not been enforced. You know, I mentioned this at a meeting a while back about slum lords are creating these, you know, hotspots in regards to crime. And my block, there are quite a few miserable nuisance tenants who are constantly violating the ordinances and breaking the laws, and I'm tired of smart ass cops giving me nothing but grief when, you know, I give them direct evidence and all they want to do is give me a hard time and then go talk to these pothead runners, you know, who throw the rocks and hide their hands and they act like it's a tea party and a social visit. This has to stop.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
That's a good start. Good evening, Lee Cyberg, East Point resident. I just want to bring up one fact. Between Beaconsfield and Kelly Road on the north side of Nine Mile, you have three entrances that only allow one car in one way and one on the other. So adding this new Skeets is going to be Skeets, Dollar Tree, Aldi's, the supermarket, the gas station with three entrances off Nine Mile. And take that into consideration with the roundabout. I don't think that's going to work very well. Something to consider.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Disappointed in your decision on Sheets, but not really surprised. Again, I don't think that it met special land use criteria for putting a gas station in there. Some other concerns with that is the way that this gas station is positioned in that parking lot. The Dollar Tree, which is right next door, no longer has access to the back corner of their building where they normally get their deliveries. A semi truck will no longer be able to fit back there because of the landscaping that Sheets would be putting in. I don't know if that's something that has been considered, you know, or if you're looking at just the Sheet site itself. Additionally, the wall behind Sheets was agreed upon to be 10 feet tall. I believe Mr. Myers and Chairman DeHaunt had agreed to 10 feet with evergreen trees because they're not going to be full grown to give a barrier for, for the residents behind there. It was mentioned in Sheet's site plan that it's eight feet, which is not 10 feet, and I really think that we should be trying to do all that we can for the residents there. A couple of other points, I know Councilwoman Pachadlik, you mentioned that the Chesterfield location, they did not get a surety bond. Chesterfield is different. Chesterfield had a gas station that I believe was abandoned or close to being abandoned with an oil change place next to it, that Sheets agreed to do the decontamination for the tanks that are already in there and then build their gas station on top of it. It's, so it's a little bit different. That's where their money went to there as, as far as, you know, saying that they gave us a surety bond, they, they actually did something to benefit the location at 23 Mile and Donard. I did watch the planning commission meeting in Chesterfield. I did go over the site plans and that. That location, they were very considerate of the residents. They had no parking behind the building. They had no entrance or exit in the back part of the building because there are condos right behind there. So, you know, when we're talking about that, we got something special here, I, I don't think so. There's no guarantee that there's going to be any EV chargers. They're not guaranteeing that for any of these locations. You know, again, I, I know it seems like it's something wonderful, but, you know, the, the prospect of maybe there being an empty building sometime at the end of 2025 is not a reason to just grab a gas station or the first thing that comes along. That's not a legitimate criteria for special land use. So I think that we kind of fell short of the bar there and unfortunately, it's going to be the residents. One more thing, we still haven't heard from Chief Haynes on it. I don't know if you don't want him to talk, but I would really like to hear his opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kleinfeld, councilmembers Gary Sasic, literally a lifetime resident of the city. And, you know, I've, I've literally lived here 73 years out of my 77 years on this planet. You have to make some hard decisions. I think you made the right decisions tonight. Planning Commission really looked into it. The, the people that are coming out saying, well, you denied 10 Mile and Hayes, what they forget to say is 10 Mile and Hayes was a bank, it was totally commercial, the gas station they wanted to put in did not meet the master plan. We have to look at a lot of criteria, and you're right, in this city, there are a lot of empty buildings and we've got to start doing things to turn these properties around. You do make some tough decisions and I'm going to support you as long as they're the right decisions and I commend you for your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
My name is Larry Edwards, East Point residence. I guess I'm kind of late to the party in regard to this year's situation tonight, but as I was listening, I do have some concerns and what have you, or some questions and what have you, because it kind of reminds me of when you're doing business, whether it's buying a car, buying a home, or a politician trying to get an office and what have you, a lot of promises are made and everything, but a lot of people sit up there and never fulfill their promise. So a lot of lies has been transpired and what have you. And I'm sure that's going to be part of this as well. And then if the Dollar Store is there, will that continue to be there? I didn't hear anything about that. And will the parking that belonged to this here gas station also interfere with or be connected to the Dollar Store that's already established there? I know they got a new Dollar Store on 10 Mile, so I was wondering if they're going to get rid of that one and, and just open up the one on 10 Mile. The other thing is, will there be music playing where you've got outdoor sitting that was said? Will there be some type of music being played over the speakers and what have you? Some of those places with music can get awful loud and what have you. So these are just some of my concerns and also realizing that trying to enter in even now off of Nine Mile into that parking lot of Aldi's, of, of the Dollar Store and, and Office Depot and what have you, it can be hectic trying to get in there sometime, whether you're going east, whether you're going, I mean, going west, and then if you're going east and got to cross the, the lanes and what have you, that can be really hectic and what have you. So I believe there was not enough consideration and things that, from what I've heard, that was took in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Pam Pavelskowsky, still a resident on Beaconsfield. I just, this is my first city council meeting, which I'm kind of embarrassed to say because I haven't been more involved, but did nobody take into consideration any kind of a safety study or consult with the police? Because we haven't heard from the police. It was addressed and not answered at the planning commission meeting. Is that on the planning commission to do that? Is it on the council to do it? Is it not on anybody to worry about the safety of the citizens of East Point? I'm just curious how it works because, like I said, this is my first meeting. And the other point I wanted to make is, somebody had made a point that they didn't want another empty building on Nine Mile because it's already such an issue, which it is. But I was under the understanding that that office supply store wanted to stay there and the owner of that land did not renew their lease because they wanted to deal with Sheets. So maybe if Sheets didn't get that deal, that office supply would stay there or something else would have moved in. Granted, the parking lot's a disaster, but I don't know. There was a business there employing, I don't know how many people, I don't know if it's more or less than what Sheets is planning to hire, but there was a viable business there that was pushed out by this company and everybody approved it here. But I really would like to hear from the police on their opinion about what they think will happen if that 24 hour dining goes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed. Thank you. Sure. Go ahead. Thank you. Mayor and council reports, Councilman Curly.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might ask the city manager about the wall, is it, did the planning commission agree to eight feet or is it supposed to be 10 feet? So if somebody could double check on that.
I don't know offhand, but I did take the same note, so I will clarify and get back with you guys.
We're agreed.
Do you have, no, do you, do you have any other?
Oh, and the only other thing, and I'm trying, I'm trying to, when people come up there and ask questions, is there, do we have some type of an ordinance about installing a handicap on somebody's porch? Do we have anything to do with that? If I come home from the hospital and I need a handicap, maybe a guy, I need a permit to do the building permit?
Yes, like if you're going to do a new porch, yes, there would be a permit for porches.
Before I, I'm talking about the handicap ramp.
Like a temporary? I guess it would depend on what you were trying to do, but they do regulate new porches or amendments to porches.
Yes, sir.
If I may, if it's a temporary need and it's going to be installed, it still needs to be regulated by the building department for the sake of health and safety because they're designed to only be used on a certain ramp size, capability and degree of pitch. And so, yes, even for a medical need for short term, we can grant it, but it needs to be done through a permit of approval.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any comments for tonight? Okay. Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess first, just would like to comment on Sheets really quickly, since obviously a lot of people came out to hear about that. I guess a lot of them, hopefully, maybe they'll listen later to all of our comments too, because a lot of people have left. But it was a tough vote for me and I think, as you saw tonight, I, I think the council could go either way on that if they'd like. It's, it's more of a, it's not a black or white decision with how the special land uses work. You know, I've made an argument one way, obviously the other three council members made it the other way, but I think it's a lot more about what actually Ms. Nicholas brought up during public hearing about the items of the special land use. There's a lot of other questions that are good questions tonight, but don't pertain to what we were voting on, especially, I guess, the one thing that I'd like to mention, and maybe not necessarily some, something someone is indicating tonight, but what I've heard from other people just talking in the community, city council up here doesn't just pick businesses to move into the city. If the, this was the first time we had our opinion stated publicly. I know some people at the hearing of the public were saying our decisions were already made up and all that, but we were, this is the first meeting we're coming into to vote onto it. We didn't put it on the planning commission, you know, agenda. The business comes in, works with the city and gets on the planning commission first and it eventually comes to us either with a approval or denial. So I wish we could just call a business and be like, hey, come on in. I think we'd have zero vacant businesses on Nine Mile if it was that easy, and, and every city, I guess, would, you know. So I think that was mostly about that. Oh, Wigs for Kids, real quick, my wife's done that a couple of times, Ms. Meragian is a great cause, so if anyone does, I haven't grown my hair that, actually, maybe I did during COVID. It was probably close to long enough, I should have kept going. If anyone does cut their hair, go to Wigs for Kids and donate it. Hope also everyone had a good time if they did the citywide garage sale. Hopefully it worked out for you. Saw a few comments on Facebook, maybe I'll spend a little more time on there, see if people had a good time or whatnot, or were able to sell things, and then hope everyone had a good time too. If you went to Mount Clemens for Macomb County Prides Festival, that was a good time. And then, very important thing you got to mention, the dunk tank that we had a few days ago was very successful. Thank you to everyone that came out. We raised $865 for the Memorial Day Parade minus the cost of the dunk tank, so it came out to, I think it was 520, somewhere right around there. And so that's a good chunk of- And so, that's a good chunk of what it costs to put on the parade. But most importantly also, the last $60 was raised by Ms. Meragian. It was mostly the mayor and I up there getting dunked, but then she came over and said, Mr. Kleinfeld here would, he'll donate 30 bucks if Karen got up on the thing to be dunked, and she tried to get me to go higher, and I said, hey, I'll throw in 30 also. And so we raised another 60 bucks for the parade and were able to dunk her a couple times. So that was fun. It's still a lot less times than Mike and I were dunked. I think it was like 15 apiece or something. I lost count for sure. But was a good time, so hopefully, I think we'll do it again next year. He's shaking his head, no, God, I'll be out of town that day. But hopefully come out next year, if you can, and raise some money for the parade, but that's all.
Councilwoman Pashadlik?
I'm going to piggyback on that. It was a good cause, and I think it was well-attended. The whole event itself was fun, and you guys were, should be commended for putting up with that. It was actually quite fun. I think you guys secretly enjoyed it, just saying. And then, secondly, I'd like to mention Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission met this past Monday, and we've scheduled the art show that we're going to have in October, Friday, October 17th, oh, excuse me, 18th, in the evening. It'll be adults only, and then Saturday, the 19th, October 19th, will be for the kids and rest of the families from noon to 5 that day. So I'd like to just make mention of that. So get your artistic, creative ways going and make your submissions. Those submissions are going to be accepted starting September 9th, so if you know anyone who's artistic, please submit your artwork or your sculpture, whatever it is you do. We'd appreciate it. And with respect to the Sheets vote today, it was a difficult one. I do want to commend the planning commission for all the hard work that they put forth on that meeting. I know they asked a lot of questions, it was very difficult, but I do want to commend them for their service to the community, and I know it's not always easy, as the chair DeHaunt had mentioned, you know, they put a lot of work into it, and I think that we should commend them for their service within our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I guess I'll start with just mentioning or responding to some of the things with the Sheets thing. I would disagree that talking about the vacancies on Nine Mile, that goes to improvement of the community. It might not be something that was highlighted from our planners, but it's something that we do have to consider. Again, my main concerns about it are really probably the competition for the other existing gas stations, but that I felt fell outside of the concerns. It wasn't necessarily an easy decision, because again, it's not exactly what I would pick if I could pick any business to open up on Nine Mile, but I think we have to do what we can to make sure that that road continues to develop. I'd like to say thank you to our police officers and our chief. I know that you had some extra officers here tonight to help make sure that things went smoothly, and I do appreciate that you guys were here to help us out tonight. I would like to thank Karen for getting up on the dunk tank. She made a joke, like, would you pay to get up there? And I was like, yes. And Chief Haynes, it was a last-minute thing. Had we had known, we would have invited out the police department. And if that sounds, that was her joke, so. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I do appreciate that people take the time out of their day to come and speak to us, and I encourage you to email and call us if we don't get to have a lot of back and forth here. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Support that motion to adjourn?
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Pashadlik?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 9:09 PM.